Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the 2022 Clovis City Council Candidates Debate. At this time, I'd ask if you would, please silence your phones. We'll also ask that you please keep all applause to a minimum. When the candidates provide their remarks, please keep all, any noise to a minimum. We really want to focus on the response. And at this time, I would like to welcome Jim Franklin to lead us in prayer.
The one mic they didn't test. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us here in the Valley. Thank you, Lord, for the city of Clovis, and the blessings that you've bestowed upon us, and for this great country in which we live, which our motto is "In God We Trust." And so tonight, Lord, as we hear from these candidates who are sacrificing their time and their effort to serve this community, we pray for truth, and we pray for justice. We pray, Lord God, that your will would prevail. Thank you again for this day, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to invite Greg Newman, President and CEO of the Clovis Chamber of Commerce, to lead us in the pledge.
Okay, thank you. If you're a veteran, please salute. If not a veteran, please place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Thank you. Well, a quick welcome and thank you from the Clovis Chamber of Commerce. The Clovis Chamber of Commerce has been around since 1910, 112 years, and this is what we do. We are here to promote programs in our community, to build up our business community, and that's all starts with the leadership in our community. So, we are honored to be here and participating in this historic debate, and this is an election that will help to shape Clovis for many years to come. So, Lorenzo, back to you, and thank you from the Clovis Chamber.
Thank you, Greg. I'm Lorenzo Rio, CEO of the Clovis Veterans Memorial District. It's an honor to welcome you to your district. This district's mission is to provide a permanent living memorial honoring U.S. military and veterans, provide facilities and support programs to promote a legacy of service for preserving our communities and countries' foundational ideals. We do this by supporting community events like this one right here that brings our community together. You know, every good citizen adds to the strength of our nation, and it's every citizen's duty to make the sacrifice matter of the 1% that serves this great nation in our military service. We're honored to partner with the Clovis Chamber of Commerce, CMAC, KXEX 1550, to bring this to you in person, live on Facebook, on demand at cmac.tv, KGMC 42, Comcast Channel 77, and Dish 39, and live on KXEX 1550 and the CMAC Government Channel. Ladies and gentlemen, it's an honor to have you here, and candidates, thank you so much for taking time out of your schedule to come join us today as we engage in lively conversation to let the community know what your positions are on different issues, as this will be a very important election. Each candidate will be given an opening statement not to exceed one minute, which will be followed by questions where every candidate will have an opportunity to respond. Responses must be kept to one minute unless directed otherwise by the moderators. If another candidate is mentioned by name, that candidate will be given 30 seconds for rebuttal. We're aware of the short time constraints, but with 10 candidates, this is the best way of making sure everyone has an opportunity to be heard. There is a clock on the back of the facility. Can everyone see it?
Yes.
Okay, I'm asking because it's in red, red font. If everyone looks behind you, you'll see that. That clock is there so that the candidates can see how much time they have. At the end of that time, they will have their microphones turned off. So, we encourage you to monitor that clock, and this way, we will make sure everyone has an opportunity, a fair share of time. Now, for this evening, you'll notice the candidates are sitting in a certain sequence here, and that sequence was designed by, when they came in, they drew a number, and that number is what determines what seat they were in. So, it's not by alphabetical order and/or preference. It was all by chance. So, this is how everybody's seated. Mr. Salas and Mr. Kazanjian, their numbers were selected by a random selection. One of our attendants here selected the number, and that's how they were placed. Now, at this time, I'd like to start with candidate number two, Joshua Fanko. If you would, start with a one-minute intro, and then we'll just go all the way down the row. Joshua?
Great, thank you. Yes, my name is Joshua Fanko, and just a little bit about myself. I'm a husband of nearly 21 years to my beautiful wife, Kimberly, father of three children, Lauren, Gavin, and TK, all attend Clovis schools. I'm a proud business owner of a small but mighty insurance agency here in Clovis. Been rooted here since day one, and proud members of the Clovis Chamber. We, I love this city. Reason I'm running for city council is I want to do everything I can to continue to serve my community. The city has been good to me and my family, and I believe if you talk to anybody that calls Clovis home, most of everyone would say the same thing. I believe we're at a pivotal point in our growth, that we need strong leadership to make sure that, in spite of our great history, that we have the ability to say that Clovis is a great city going forward, and I look forward to serving as your council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Dez?
Hello, thank you. My name is Dez House. I am a 33-year-old mother of two beautiful girls, Joey and Frankie, and married to my husband Caleb. I grew up in the Central Valley, lifelong resident, and we chose to move to Clovis for very specific reasons. We're safe, there's phenomenal schools, and this town has a sense of community unlike anywhere else in the state of California. The reason I decided to run for council is because I kind of, I want to keep it that way. I want to ensure that my daughters and the community members in Clovis have a city that loves them back, gives them opportunity through jobs, and just the ability to be heard on a platform that is open to everyone. I have been welcomed into Clovis with open arms, and as a council member, I would serve it as well. I handle strategic partnerships for an energy company. I work day in, day out with legislators, so we wouldn't have to wait to get the message from down the line. I'd have it right away. Clovis first, Clovis always.
Thank you, Dez. Guy?
First off, I'd like to say thank you to the staff organizing the event, and our moderators, as well as the other candidates for being here. Thank you very much for letting me be here to speak. I've lived in Clovis since 1998, when my family moved here from the Bay Area. In the past 25 years, I've seen Clovis's phenomenal growth, but I've also seen parts of Clovis get left behind. So, I will be the first to say that I am not the most qualified person on this stage. So, why am I running? What do I bring? And I bring perspective. I bring perspective of the woman pushing all her belongings in a shopping cart down the street. I bring perspective of the kid who missed the bus to get to school and is now walking two miles to get there. I bring perspective on living in a rental property on a fixed income. That is why I'm running for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, we will do so. Drew?
Good evening. My name is Drew Bessinger. I'm a 38-year Clovis resident, and I have served as citizens of Clovis for 30 years. Local government is the most important element of government. We're the folks that make sure that you have water, that your sewer works, that your infrastructure is there, and that when you call the police or fire department, there's a firefighter or a police officer at your door in three to five minutes. I was the mayor during the first awful year of COVID. We, as a city, stepped up. We took care of our health concerns with our healthcare operators, but there came a point where we had to step up for our small businesses that were deemed to be not essential. And I'm proud that we did not do what our neighboring city did, send code enforcement after our small businesses who were struggling. I stepped up and wrote directly to the governor on several occasions, on behalf of small businesses, on behalf of gun owners, on behalf of restaurants, and I also did with ABC and the Consumer Affairs. This is an important election. There are three positions. Your vote's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle?
Hi, my name's Kyle Chaney, lifelong Valley resident. I'm a husband, father of three that have all attended Clovis schools. I graduated from Clovis West, Fresno State, and I've called Clovis home for nearly 20 years. If you see on my signs out there, it says "Fighting for the Clovis Way of Life." What that means is, by no mistake, Clovis has voted, or has rated, the safest city in the valley, and we're voted one of the best places to raise a family in all of California. So, the best way that I could see to maintain and preserve those traditions is maintaining a police force that's at least one officer per thousand, a fully-staffed fire department, not forgetting about our older communities and continuing to invest in them, and keep bringing the unique things that Clovis has to offer, like Old Town Clovis and the farmers' markets. And also balancing our growth, making sure that we're bringing the right economics, economic partners in, as well as the right mix of housing, so that people that want to live in Clovis and work in Clovis can live and work in Clovis. I look forward to your vote in November.
Thank you, Kyle. Matt?
Okay, well, thank you for having me here tonight. It's an honor to be here and being a candidate for the Clovis City Council. I grew up in Clovis. I moved here when I was five years old. My wife and I both attended Clovis High School, my wife Joanie, who's sitting over here. We both, we raised our two children to live in Clovis. I have a 26-year-old daughter who's now a schoolteacher, graduated from Buchanan. I have a 22-year-old daughter who recently graduated from Fresno State. The fact is, is Clovis is our home. We're not going anywhere. I'm not looking to move to Idaho, or Washington, or anywhere else. I want to be part of the Clovis community, and I have been, you know, like I said, since five. I spent 29 years with the Clovis Police Department, my last six years as the Chief of Police. I retired as the Chief of Police from Clovis in August of 2019. After being home for a little while, I decided it was time to get back in and serve that community that's been so good to me and my family. So, I look forward to getting your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Diane?
Good evening. I'm Diane Pierce, and I want to thank the Clovis Chamber, Clovis Veterans Memorial District, CMAC, and KXEX for hosting this debate. I've lived in this area my entire life. I graduated from Fresno Christian High School, earned two degrees from UC Davis, and when I came home, I worked for a local congressman and was a substitute teacher in Clovis Unified. For the last 20 years, my husband Jeremy and I have run our own small business. I'm running for city council because I believe that diversity of experience is important, and we don't currently have someone who is self-employed on the council. I understand that the top priority of any elected official is public safety, and we must lean into the fact that police presence deters crime to confront the challenges we face. I'm proud to have the endorsement of Sheriff Margaret Mims and Sheriff-elect John Zanoni in this race. We need someone who will have the backbone to be assertive and bold when it comes to maintaining local control and pushing back against crazy Sacramento mandates. I look forward to tonight's discussion and hope to earn your vote.
Thank you, Diane. Joe?
My name is Joe Abear, and I'm humbled and honored to be here tonight. Thank you very much for having me. I'm not, unlike the other candidates here, I'm not a lifelong Clovis resident. I've been here for 13 years and have really enjoyed my stay here. My wife and I have traveled throughout the world and lived in several places, and let me tell you, this is one of the best places that we've found that we lived. When we travel, what we find is when we go out and we come back, there's always this, "Ah, we're back." And anyplace I've been, I've made an effort to make better. I'm currently a department head for the city of Madera. I've worked in nonprofits. I've worked in the public sector. I sit on a number of boards, and so with all that experience, I'm looking to be your next councilperson. Thank you very much for your vote, and thank you very much for having me tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you, candidates, for your opening remarks. This next portion of this discussion will be a lightning round, and what will, our president and CEO from our chamber, Greg Newman, will ask a question, and if you agree with it or affirm, you will raise your hand. If you don't agree with it, you will keep your hand down. I will only recognize those hands that did not go up. Otherwise, if I don't recognize your name, for the listening audience, that person did not raise their hand. So, if you raise your hand, you say yes. If you don't raise your hand, that's a no, and no discussion. It's just yes or no. Thank you. Greg, would you lead us?
Okay, so this is the lightning round. Most of these questions were received by us from the citizens of Clovis through our website. So, here we go. Have you lived in Clovis for more than five years?
I see Dez, Diane. Those are the only two hands that are up. Thank you.
Okay. Do you work at or own a business in Clovis?
Okay, Dez, Guy, Drew, and Joe are the only hands that did not go up. Thank you.
Did you graduate from a Clovis school?
Joshua, Dez, Drew, Diane, and Joe.
Do you support vaccine mandates?
No hands went up. So, Joshua, Dez, Guy, no, Kyle, Drew, wait a minute, Guy and Kyle, Matt, Diane, and Joe. This is where live, this is real politics here, folks. Hometown, and this guy not getting the names right, so I apologize. But for the listening audience, nobody raised their hands. Nobody supports vaccine mandates. Thank you.
Okay. The city of Clovis needs additional police and fire personnel to maintain public safety. This cannot be accomplished with current taxed revenue. Would you support a sales tax measure to provide adequate funding?
The only ones that say no are, are you a hands up or hands down? Okay, so the only hands down are Diane and Joe Hebert. Thank you.
Do you support having the city do more reclaimed water projects?
All hands are up.
Do you support the twice-a-year curbside pickup program in Clovis?
All hands are up.
Are you active in a nonprofit in our community?
Guy, Drew, Joshua, and that's it. No, I'm sorry, Kyle. I'm sorry. Let me get these names right. So, Guy, Drew, and Kyle. I'm looking at these pictures, and I apologize, but those are the three. Thank you. That works. We're going to get there, I promise.
Okay, so we're going to ask another question. Everybody is going to have a chance to answer. We're going to start with seat number three, I believe, Lorenzo.
Yes.
Dez. So, question. Everybody's going to get an opportunity to answer this. With the increasing, with the increasing state, federal, and local regulations facing small business, what would you do as a council member to make our community more business-friendly?
You'll all have one minute. Dez?
First and foremost, always advocate for our business owners, because they are what keep our community thriving and growing, especially here in Clovis. That's the heartbeat of our city. So, what I would do is, with my close relationships with the League of California Cities and a lot of different folks in Sacramento, is I would leverage every single resource that I have to be able to bring, any grant, any legislation, anything that could help our business owners thrive. I would work with our council, because ultimately it is a governing council, and we would have to work together collaboratively, to set up a forum where we can listen to all of our business owners, as well as our community members, to see what they would want to do in their city and how we should proceed. Because as a council, we are here for our business owners and for our community members.
Thank you. Guy?
So, there's a coffee shop near my house that opened up about two months ago, and I was asking the owner what's some of the issues that he ran into when he was opening his business. And he said, for about three months, he couldn't get a permit for a partition wall, and he was paying rent and wages during that time. So, I think just not getting caught up in the bureaucracy, getting the people out there, making money, I think that is what's going to help our small business and new small businesses thrive in our community.
Thank you. Drew?
I think it's important that we leverage everything that's out there, state, federal, local, working with the EDC, having people on staff whose function is to get businesses here. Seek them out, make it easier for them to find properties. Could come down to the city waiving fees if we need to, making it easier and more effective for businesses to come in, and not just minimum-wage businesses. We need to bring in professional businesses. One of the things that we've done as a council with the healthcare community is create a medical destination for Clovis. That is, that's going to bring good jobs. We'll be able to, our kids will be able to go to medical school. This could be a great thing for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle?
Yes, we need to make sure that we are removing any of the red tape that may or may not be there. I've talked with a lot of business owners, and, you know, unfortunately, we compare ourselves to our neighbors to the west, and we say, "Oh, it's better than over there." That's a pretty low standard. I want to make sure that the things, when people come into our city planning, they can get the permits, they can have the ability to talk to people one-on-one, get the correct answers, and move forward. Clovis is known for that. I want to continue that we do that. Similarly, leveraging every opportunity to bring in funds and our economic development team to make sure that we are attracting the right mix of businesses here, and that we are making it not cost prohibitive for those businesses to relocate to Clovis and provide something other than just minimum-wage jobs. Minimum-wage jobs are fantastic as a starting point, but they don't support a community that we have, that we have such in Clovis, and our ability to focus, again, like how we have in Old Town Clovis, and make that a destination for tourism and antiques and people wanting to come here. So, making sure that the red tape is removed.
Thank you. Matt?
So, I agree with removing the red tape, and there are processes that the city provides to business owners and small business owners to go through and learn what the process is for them to get their permit, so that it can kind of cut through some of that red tape. Sometimes, we don't do a very good job of getting that information out, though, so that's part of it. We need to provide the information, get it out to people. I do think that we need to listen to our business owners and what their ideas are. I believe we need to expand our economic development team with the city, and we also need a grid of grant writer, a full-time grant-writing person that can help businesses get, help businesses get those grants that are out there and available, and the city be a catalyst for those persons, so they can be successful with their businesses. Currently, we don't have those in place. We have the economic development team, but we can expand that and do more with it, and I think those two steps alone will help us with our small business owners and bring it more into the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane?
Yeah, specifically for the regulations that are coming in, I think we need to make sure that our small business community, which is incredibly innovative here in Clovis and the backbone of our community, that they do know that we are here to serve them at the city of Clovis, that we want to hear what their needs are, what their expectations are, and then meet those, so that they can have the most seamless opportunity to do business and serve our citizens. I do think grants are going to be a key component to that moving forward, and economic growth and development is really important for our community, because that's going to be the biggest way that we can generate revenue and bring it into our city, so we don't have to pursue safety taxes or things like that if we can avoid it. So, I think we need to make sure that our businesses have an open door, that we are fully communicative with them, that they do know the processes, and make sure that whatever it is we can do at a local level to reduce the impact of those regulations coming in, that we're doing that full-throatedly.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I spent 30 years in the Fortune 100 space, and during the economic downturn, one of the areas that I excelled in is process improvement and streamlining processes. One of the things I bring to this, to the city, as far as businesses, is streamlining those processes and removing red tape for new businesses to come. One of the other people mentioned about grant writing, I've written over $3 million worth of grants this year. I'm in the process of writing another $5 million for the city of Madera. I agree, we need better grant writing. There are other ways to look at things, but I think also transparency and getting information from business owners and even business applicants, what is impeding them to be coming to this city. And so, those are the things that I would focus on, and those are the things that I've done in the past. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Joshua?
As a business owner, I love this question, because I believe that it is our job as a local representative to first be accessible. As a business owner, I felt I've always had the ability to pick up the phone and talk to somebody at city staff or a council member, and have that conversation about the challenges that I'm facing. You know, my job as a council member is to represent businesses and to do whatever's necessary to help them be successful and thrive. So, to be able to have that communication with them on a regular basis, and not just wait until there's a problem, but to go out and be proactive and talk with people about what they need. What is it that you need to be more successful? And then, the other job is, most businesses, like myself, have a hard time having a voice in Sacramento. Let's be real. So, it's my job as a council member to then take that voice and be the voice for business owners, and to have those relationships with those at the next level to make sure that they hear what the challenges are that we're facing, that the mandates that they're pushing down on us in Clovis are impacting families. They're impacting our people here in Clovis, and I will be a strong voice of leadership for business owners, trust me.
Thank you. Greg?
Okay, another question?
Yes.
And we were going to start with?
Guy.
Guy. Okay. If elected, how are you going to ensure that Clovis will maintain our small-town values and way of life amid all the growth we are experiencing?
I think that to maintain the Clovis Way of Life, we need to make sure that there's a Clovis Way of Life for everybody, and that means improving our infrastructure, making sure that our water demand is met by our supply. Our trash pickup needs to be able to keep up. I mean, Clovis is growing at 10,000-ish people a year, and it's going to be hard to keep up with that. So, I think to maintain the Clovis Way of Life, we need to invest heavily in our infrastructure. The other thing would be in our public safety. Our police department and fire department need a few more hands, especially to meet the growing demand in our older communities, where, you know, we don't have the new houses with the sprinkler systems and the growing crime rate. So, I think that's what we need to do to maintain it.
Thank you. Drew?
Keeping the small-town feel is a combination of creating villages as we grow. It used to be, I live in Clovis, I'm a Clovis side parent. Now, I live in Loma Vista. I live in Heritage Grove. I live in different areas, so people start to associate themselves there, and it's a smaller community. But having community events consistently keeps us tied to downtown. People come downtown for rodeo, big hats. We have plenty of events downtown that can kind of keep people connected to their community. The other thing, quite frankly, is being involved in your kids' schools, whether it's your grandkids, your children. My in-laws used to go to Clovis High football games, and their daughters never played football, and they went for 30 years. So, it can be done. It just takes a little extra time. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle?
I'd say Clovis is unique in the way the community supports its school district, so making sure that that continues, that unique relationship between the city council as well as the community with the school district. Another aspect is not to forget where we've come from. We understand our principles of what a small community is, but not be afraid to make sure we're making the appropriate adjustments as we grow. And some of that is making sure we have planned, balanced, smart growth, that we're not growing at such a rate where outstripping our ability to provide the services that are necessary, that give us that hometown feel, that we know that when we call the police off, the police department, that they'll be able to show up, fire department as well. So, making sure that those things are funded from a public safety perspective, as well as our infrastructure. There's going to be times as we grow that we may need to throttle it up a little bit or throttle it down, and making sure as a council member that we're looking at the general plan, making the appropriate adjustments to make sure that we keep our ideals in front of us and our goal, but then making sure that we're able to keep that small-town feel by having a community.
Thank you. Matt?
Well, I think it begins with responsible growth as we go forward. Keeping that small-town feel and having that community, those community values, really comes down to us being responsible as we grow as a city, and that means all of us being involved. Clovis has always been special about being community. As a police chief and as a police officer, the communication that happens between the city, the citizen, or the people who live in the city of Clovis, and the police department, or the city, or whatever it may be, the community feel is really what keeps it small-town. When we lose that, that's when we won't be a small-town Clovis anymore, or have that small-town feel. It really is imperative upon all of us that we continue to talk to each other and communicate and be out and be out there for each other, be part of our community, show up to things. Just recently, this last weekend, the Clovis Police Department had, and the city of Clovis sponsored Clovis Night Out. It's a great event. It was a great thing for people to come out to and share that experience. So continuing to do those things is what makes Clovis special.
Thank you. Diane?
Yeah, I think that the Clovis way of life is really about community and it's why we have seen the growth in population that we have over the last 20-plus years is because people want that. They want to buy into it and be part of it. And so those community events, I think, are something really special and it just goes to show that Clovis is what it is because of our residents. And so I think that even though we've seen such incredible growth, we still have that community feel, whether you want to call it small-town now that we're over 125,000 people or not, it's there because that's what we want to create and that's what we continue to provide. And I think we can see a beautiful example of that if you go down Pulaski from the long-established businesses and the antique stores and then you get to that district they call Sofire south of Fifth with House of Juju, Blastin' Brew, The Foundry. And you can see that juxtaposition of who we are, where we're headed, but also the appreciation for where we've come from and what we want to continue to be.
Thank you, Diane. Joe?
Yes, one of the benefits of running for this office, I actually got a chance to meet with a number of the department heads. I think we all got that opportunity. And to a person, they all talked about the tough conversations that we're going to have to have in the future. They talked about controlled growth. They talked about having enough revenue to, to support the infrastructure to, as this town grows and keeping those values. And so in this role, it's, it's incumbent upon us to look, not only look at the general plan as we grow, but to be, have the, the courage to course correct when necessary. And so I think that's one of the ways we're going to keep the values that we have. I believe in civic engagement. I believe in a lot of the festivals that we had. We spent a lot of weekend, we spent this couple of weekends ago before I had my hip replaced with, at the Clovis Fest. Really enjoyed that time, really enjoy going to a lot of the functions here and we, we need to keep that up. But again, we have to be judicious and responsible as we do grow.
Thank you. Joshua?
Yeah, I think maintaining the, the Clovis way of life, I think, is not about being reactive but proactive and thinking ahead about what is it that we want to be, who is it that we are right now, who do we want to be? And making sure that we hold true to those things. I believe that, that Clovis is about high standards. I believe that we aren't afraid to do the hard things if it means it's going to benefit each and every person in Clovis. We, we look at ourselves as different and exceptional and unique and we should. And I think as a city leadership, we should always hold ourselves to those high standards. And we have to challenge ourselves to be proactive. We have to find ways to make sure that we can support the growth, that we can support public safety, we can make sure that we maintain the best school system out west. But we have to be proactive. We can't wait for things to happen to us and then react to it because I see that all the time. I think that's what's happened to so many, used to be great cities in our, in our state. Clovis has got to be proactive and I think it also boils down to the Clovis way of life is about mutual respect for one another and we are a very diverse community. We have to respect one another.
Thank you. Dez?
Yes, and you know, community is a huge aspect of it. I think one thing that makes Clovis so beautiful is the fact that everybody feels so welcome. You can walk into any business and any business owner will ask you how your day is going. I think what we have to do to maintain that small-town feel ultimately comes down to economic development. We have to be able to have our community members work where they live so that we are not the suburb of Fresno. If you work here, jobs are here, revenue is created here, and then we can maintain those community events that are going to be keeping everybody happy and thriving going forward. It's really hard to stay engaged when you're stressed out because gas prices are so har- high and you have to drive over to go to work. If we can provide equity through opportunity for our community members, then it's leading with Clovis first and leading with Clovis always. And that's how Clovis way of life will remain the same.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. And now I'd like to welcome to the stage Ms. Sayah Sohal, a senior from Buchanan High School, to ask the next, next question. Sayah? And this question will be, we'll start with Drew.
Hi, thank you, everyone. The homeless population has increased with pandemic protocols and economic constraints placing a greater strain on our society to respond. How do you plan to care for the growing number of unhoused people in Clovis in a manner that respects their humanity?
Thank you.
I have, I have a great deal of experience dealing with homeless. I was a police officer in Santa Barbara in the early eighties, dealt with homeless on a daily basis. As things have changed economically in our area, we are now starting to see more folks unhoused, homeless folks. And a lot of them come here because it's safer for them to be homeless than it is in Fresno. Our, our police department has done a very good job on outreach, trying to hook these people up with services to, to hopefully, if they want to get off the streets, they can. The problem is, this is a difficult situation because you have people who are homeless because they have drug and alcohol problems. They have mental health problems which culminate into really difficult situations where it's difficult for, to get them the help. You know, we, we can do the carrot, but we also have to do the stick and that's unfortunate.
Thank you, Drew. Kyle?
Yes, you know, homeless, homelessness is growing in our area, let alone Clovis. I believe our, our city council and our police department have done a very good job in maintaining that, trying to help solve that issue. But the main issue is really dealing with the people that have mental illness or addiction problems. We have to be able to give them the services or provide them the opportunity for the services that are available. And if they're not willing to take those, then we need to actually, you know, use, use the law's ability to have them removed from the general area where they're at. It does cause a safety issue for our citizens. You know, there, there's other parts of the state where people are, they, they won't go shopping where they're at because of just what the homelessness has done in front of stores and what they've done to the buildings without getting into the details. It's, it's pretty, it's unsanitary to say the least. So making sure that we respect their humanity is 100%, but also making sure that if they're not willing to seek the help, that then we use the, the full force of law to be able to take them to a place where we can, where they can get help.
Thank you. Matt?
So the homeless issue's been around for, for some time now here in Clovis and going back to when I was the Clovis, at the Clovis Police Department, we had officers that were assigned specifically to deal with homeless issues. They worked their beats, they would, there was a homeless liaison officer assigned to every shift. And the whole idea was to try and get them the resources they needed. We went to every person that was homeless, we had homeless counts, we provided them with the information on how to get the resources to get them off the street, whether that meant giving them a ride to the Fresno Rescue Mission, the Pavarello House, things of those nature. But the reality is, is that we run into a lot of people who do not want those resources. And even though you can try and provide everything, unless somebody's willing to make that decision for themselves to get off the streets, then it's tough to do, which means we ended up in enforcement issues with people, right? I mean, we ended up having to impound their, their belongings as well as, you know, take them to jail sometimes. So, you know, you want to be-
Time. Thank you. Diane?
Yeah, obviously there are different groups that we're talking about and when it, when you come to the mentally ill or the addicted, there are services available to them and it is absolutely incumbent upon us to make sure that they can access them easily and safely. We have things like the Fresno Mission with their new city center project that is going to be incredible for people to find the help that they truly need. There's also the Pavarello House, which does incredible work as well. And again, that is the humanity side of it and those people who need that help, we have to get that to them. But there's also the humanity of our business owners and there's the humanity of our neighborhoods and our schools and our parks and our families. And the quality of life in Clovis is something that inspires people and draws them here. And so for those people who refuse those services, they need to know that Clovis isn't going to put up with that kind of behavior and they can find somewhere else that will.
Thank you. Joe?
Sure, the homeless issue isn't just specific to Clovis. It's, it's all up and down the valley. And over the years, we've seen it do nothing but get worse and not better. We've had a lot of these facilities in place, Pavarello House, Fresno Rescue Mission, they've been there for as long as I've been here. And the homeless issue keeps growing and getting worse. One of the things that I, as part of my candidacy that I want to emphasize, I sit on the board of directors for a nonprofit that's based out of Visalia that addresses the homeless issue and how do we treat homeless, homelessness in a different way? Do we treat people who are homeless with dignity and with kindness? And that way we, we're able to maybe have a better impact than what we've seen already? We're not trying to fix anybody, but we're trying to help them. And so one of the things that as, in my role on that board, is I've changed our bylaws to not only just be Visalia-specific, but also, but value-specific, but valley-specific so that we, our reach would be wider. We're getting a lot of attention. We just broke ground two months ago, getting a lot of attention from the-
Time. Thank you, Joshua.
Yeah, I'm proud to be able to serve on the, the board of the Fresno Mission and we have this conversation regularly as part of our work and Fresno Mission is just one. But the conversation is exactly that, Sayah. It's just how do you treat people and how do you help people with dignity? These are people, these are our neighbors, these are our friends, many of them are children, brothers or sisters. And it's hard to just have a rigid approach to each and every person, but I think the important part for us is to make sure that we engage our community partners. We have amazing community partners that know how to, how to work with our, our friends out there and, and help them through these stages of life. And we need to, as a city leadership, we need to engage our community partners. Five members on a city council are not going to solve the homelessness problem unless we engage our community partners that live in this each and every day. And so having that regular, ongoing conversation with them about where is the need? It's not just a homeless issue. The homeless issue, putting a roof over the head has not solved their problem. There's other issues that are impacting them that are causing them to be homeless and we need to work with our community partners.
Dez?
Yes, you know, again, it can come down to equity through opportunity. If we have more jobs available here, maybe someone that, before they get homeless, they're going to have that opportunity to find a job that can help them get back on their feet. But it's also about being fully aware of current legislation that's out there. On the 16th, the governor actually signed the bill SV 1338, which it compels mental health. So for those people that are almost too far gone, there are, there is now a process to get them into treatment and help them in spite of theirselves when they can't make that decision for themselves. Here in the county, it's going to go through care court, which is going to be administered by our county, from the state down to our county, which will help give them a place to stay, treatment, because you can't just house them. You have to treat what's getting them there on the street as well. And if we could have jobs here, if we can promote the, the resources that are available within our community to our community, provided through any group, legislation, grant, we should be able to capitalize on that to keep Clovis, Clovis.
Thank you. Guy?
So other communities have implemented what they call a housing-first program. And I think that that is a program that we can implement. What that means is we, are we okay?
Go ahead.
Okay. So what that means is that they get a roof, a bed and somewhere safe to stay. I believe that most homeless don't want to be homeless, but it's hard to recover from their addiction or get mental health help without that safety net. So I believe by implementing a housing-for-first program and getting these people off the streets first before they get care is going to help them more in the long run and help them reintegrate with society and become productive members of our community.
Thank you, Guy. Sayah, thank you so much. Now what's next for you? You're graduating this coming year, where are you heading to next?
Um, right now, I'm just filling out college applications and then we'll decide from there, but in the long run, I want to go to medical school and become a pediatrician and hopefully come back to Clovis and open up my own private practice here. And yeah, that's pretty much all I have planned out so far.
I think, I think Clovis is in good hands. Thank you, Sayah. We wish her the very best. And the decisions we make today will set the foundations for her to enjoy. Next, I'd like to invite Guillermo Moreno from KXEX to ask, ask the next question and the question will be for Kyle. Guillermo?
Good evening, candidates. Clovis has been criticized in recent years over business climate, equity and low-income housing. What change does Clovis need to address, if any?
It's a great question and I appreciate it. I'm not sure if there's anything that needs to change, but we need to make sure that our general plan and how we're applying the general plan fits to what the needs of Clovis are. So if there are certain things, whether it be come from the state, that we actually have to follow and there's not a way around it, then we need to look at what's the best opportunity by engaging the community to see how about make certain changes to the, whether it be land use policies or infrastructure policies, that's going to benefit the community. So I, I would say it really just depends on what it is and where it comes from, but there's a good chance that there's nothing to change. But we have to have the open mind to make sure that we are, have the ability that we track the right type of economic development, infrastructure development so that we have jobs in our, in our community, as well as the right mix of housing so that people that want to live in Clovis and work in Clovis can live and work in Clovis.
Thank you. Matt?
So I would say that sometimes the misnomer is, is that Clovis isn't a diverse community. And I think Clovis is a very diverse community and it's a very equitable community. Those of us that have worked out there and, and seen the people who live in the city of Clovis, we, we are very diverse. As far as the housing stuff goes, I really think it goes down to the master plan. City of Clovis is looking to redo the master plan on how we look at housing, what the new state laws have generated and what they're going to require us to do, you know, and trying to find that balance. You know, I think one of the things we don't want to do is have a knee-jerk reaction to anything. And sometimes we get things that are pushed down from Sacramento to us and it makes it seem like now all of a sudden we have to, you know, build a bunch of smaller homes or a bunch of smaller apartments or things of that nature to meet the need for this moment. But we really need to look at it from a long-term perspective, the master plan, how are we all going to work together going forward with that?
Thank you, Matt. Diane?
Yeah, I think the key is recognizing when Sacramento is trying to put their one-size-fits-all approach and put it over Clovis and tell us how to do things, it's our representative's responsibility to turn around and let them know that that's not going to work here. But the other part of that is you have to be willing to do the really hard work of digging down into those policies, into those mandates and finding the loopholes. Because when it comes to housing, there are ways to address those things with targeted groups. And so you can still look at these things that are coming out of Sacramento and through the difficult work of digging into it and really putting that local control element first, you can still figure out how to way to do, to do it in a way that is best for Clovis. And so I think it just takes people who are willing to fight for that local control, be willing to stand up and push back when Sacramento's trying to tell us how to do things that don't work for Clovis.
Thank you, Diane. Joe?
Yeah, I lived in quite a few places other than Clovis before coming here 13 years ago. One of the things that really attracted me to this place, when we meet people in Clovis, they always talk about, hey, I lived in the Bay Area or I lived down south. And then when I decided to raise a family, I came back because I like Clovis. It had, offered a lot of opportunity as a, starting a family. And those are the things that I would like to see Clovis continue. I worry about my kids being able to come back here and start a life because I see property value, property prices going up. I see, and that's one of the things that, that it keeps me up at night because I would love to see, I know my wife would love to see our grandkids here as opposed to somewhere else. And so really, I think there's ways that we can maybe look at maybe attracting more, more businesses or maybe getting creative as far as making, helping with down payment assistance for first-time home buyers. But I'd love to see those young families having an opportunity to succeed. For those of us who are here, our property values are going up, it's, that's not a bad deal, but people coming in-
Time. Thank you, Joe. Joshua?
Yeah, I think for business equity, I think it's just about making sure that the rule or the, the rules of the game are the same for everybody. It's up to us as business owners to take advantage of the opportunity and business owners are ambitious, they'll find where the opportunities are and they will go after it. I don't think it's our job, local government, to tell which businesses should be opened or which one shouldn't be. I think that's for the market forces to determine that, but as long as we provide equitable opportunity for everybody, I think we're in great shape. As far as low-income housing, one of the things that I think would be the best thing that we could do is go to local real estate investors, local developers, bring the best minds to the table. If there's a housing issue, a housing problem, let's bring the people that know how to solve that to the table and give them opportunities to be in part of the conversation.
that to the table and give them opportunities to be in part of the conversation. And let's see if we can bring the mandates that are coming down and the rules and regulations that are being forced down and see if we can get the people together at the table that know how to solve that problem and come together for that solution.
Thank you. Des?
Yeah, you know, it comes down to knowing what's coming down, which mandates are going to be thrown out there. And especially when it comes to housing, growth is great as long as it's done sustainably. We don't want to just pop up houses that are going to have a very high price tag on them, and then the first rain, it's flooding because it wasn't built adequately or with enough resources from the city. And again, that'll come down to what's in our general fund. We have to look at our master plan and see how we can grow sustainably and responsibly. That in turn will help our businesses thrive, and it's about knowing what legislations out there, what grants are out there. How can each development, how can every community member support our businesses here in Clovis? As a governing council, we have to be the largest advocates for our community members, but for our businesses. And we can only do that if we're generating enough revenue to make sure that any growth done in the city is not being passed, the buck's not being passed to our community members, but we can fund it in every way possible. So knowing your legislation and moving forward and advocating for our citizens.
Time. Thank you. Guy?
I think that as a community, we need to invest in high-density residential developments. So Clovis has a large young adult population. We have a lot of college students that are working one or two jobs. We also have a large senior citizen population, and I think by investing in high-density residential apartments, mobile homes, we can help meet both those needs. It's not for everybody. I know I grew up in apartments, and I'm up here now. But I think in an apartment, you develop that sense of community, and I think that can help make Clovis as a community stronger. Now, a lot of those young adults move out of those apartments, and new young adults move in. And I, so yeah, basically, high residential, I think, is a necessity now. I think the home prices are too high as they are.
Time. Thank you. Drew?
One of the problems we're running into is the erosion of local control by Sacramento. They give us unfunded mandates like the Affordable Housing Act. We're required to set aside swaths of land for affordable housing, which means a three-to-four-story apartment complex. But if we, as a city, have anything to do with building that, it becomes a prevailing wage job, which is no longer going to be affordable, which means that someone's going to have to subsidize that, and it's not going to be the state of California. If you live, if you have a vacant lot next to your house, by right, right now, someone can come and put a fourplex there, and you have nothing to say, we have nothing to say. This is a big problem, and it ends up at our doorstep, and then we get sued because we don't do it. This is very frustrating, and I don't think it's going to change.
Thank you. Guillermo?
All right, with a show of hands, yes, affirmative, raise your hand. Who views public safety, police, and fire as their number-one priority? Show of hands. Okay?
Hold on a second. So I've got Des and Guy are the two that are hands-down, okay? This question will start with Matt.
Now, by the show of hands, over 80% of the general fund goes to police and fire, 80%. Share with the public, if you would increase it, what would you do differently?
So 80% of the general fund does go towards police and fire, but that's because that's where the money comes from. It's not your water bill, everything else goes through the enterprise account. So when you start talking about what will we do next, it's, we have to really start thinking about serious options. One of those options is Measure B, that's currently on the ballot for a raise in hotel tax to, a trans, I was going to say it wrong, a transit tax that will increase revenue to the city of Clovis to go towards public safety. Now, the 2% is estimated to generate about $500,000. That doesn't get us to the 30 officers we're short. And I think that's going to be the real hard questions we're going to have to face going forward is, how do we increase it to make sure that we maintain the safest city in the valley, which we've been doing for years on a limited budget that currently exists? I know it sounds like a lot, but it's very expensive to run a police department and a fire department, and I.
Time. Thank you, Matt. Diane?
I think while public safety is absolutely the top priority, it kind of dovetails with the other topic of conversation, which is economic development. Because the only way to increase the dollars that go into the general fund is through increased revenues. And so if we pursue commercial development, economic growth, then we can actually address those issues in a way that doesn't require us having to go back to the citizens with a public safety tax, if we can make good enough headway there. So I think those two things, at least in my mind, are very closely connected at this point for Clovis. And so it's not so much about doing anything different, but about pursuing additional revenue sources. That can also be in the form of grants as well, and just not leaving any stone unturned to make sure that we're bringing in as much as possible to make sure that our public safety does remain that top priority and is fully funded for our citizens, because that's what we deserve and that's what we expect from them, and we want to make sure that they have every single resource to continue to deliver that to us.
Thank you, Diane. Joe?
Yeah, 80% is not that uncommon. It's pretty consistent with what's in the city of Madera. And one of the things, we're addressing the same issue, is trying to keep our fire and police engaged, especially our police department, they're understaffed. We're looking to do economic development through attracting new businesses. We just signed a, an agreement to bring In-N-Out Burger there, so that'll help. One of the things we're also looking at is grants. I mean, there's, there's a lot of grant opportunities out there when you, when you look for them. And I think we don't have a grant writer on staff, just like the city of Clovis, but I think we've got a number of people who have that ability. It's a good, good thing to work with city staff to see that we can maybe increase this, the development here and also not lose what we already have. And I mentioned earlier that we're going to have to have some tough conversations as we grow. Do we have enough revenue to support the way of life that we currently have?
Thank you. Joshua?
Yeah, I think in this issue, there's short-term and long-term solutions for this. And I believe that, you know, as leaders, we have to be willing to do whatever it takes to make sure that the men and women that serve in our police department and our fire department have the support that they need from the city leadership. And so if the only way in the short term to do that is to, again, look at ourselves, look at my neighbors and say, hey, the only way we can take care of them and give them the resources they need to have enough people to help them is to, to take care of that in the short term, so be it. But that better only come when we, as city leadership, have done everything we can to create long-term solutions and solutions to make sure that this doesn't become a perpetual problem. I feel like where a lot of local governments fail is we're reactive, and we're not looking 10, 20 years down the road to see what can we do to develop the sustained revenue to make sure that we don't have to keep going back to this question each and every year. So I couldn't agree more. We have to create better economic development and opportunities here in our communities to support our police and fire.
Thank you. Drew? And Des and Guy, we will give you an opportunity to provide your number-one. We're going to focus on those who said this was their number-one priority first, and then we'll give you an opportunity. So Drew?
Thank you. In the short term, our transient tax will give us about $500,000, which should give us about four police officers a year. That will give us at least some breathing room. At some point, we're going to have to make some hard decisions. Hopefully, with the new housing, that cost that has higher tax rate on it, hopefully between that and increasing our businesses, our property and sales taxes will go up to the point where we're going to be able to use those funds for police and fire. But we may end up in a situation where we have to come back to the public and say, we need some extra help. I think that extra help would be conditional, it would have, it would have an end date, you know, maybe eight years down the road. And it's not really kicking the can. I think in eight years, things will be different because our purse liability would be much lower. So that's how I think we should do it.
Thank you. Kyle?
Yes, as we've said, 80% is seems to be high, but it's not. It takes an incredible amount of effort to run a police department as well as a fire department. And again, as we've talked about, it's economic development, having a strong tax base that supports the services that we want. We need to make sure that we are looking and being very creative within the budget and our efficiencies of how we operate to make sure that we are finding where, places where there is money. I mean, right now, it's difficult, there's inflation, there's a lot of things going on, so I know how hard it is for those dollars to come in. So before I'm willing to go and offer a tax, I want to make sure we've done everything. But again, we are going to have to have these hard conversations. Measure B is, it's going to be helpful, but it's not going to solve the problem. It doesn't necessarily affect many members or citizens in the city because it's a hotel tax, but we're going to come up against something, especially as we're staring down a recession, we're going to have some particular issues with our funding. The nice thing is that we do have an increased tax base from the recent property increases, but at some time, they may come down.
Time. Thank you.
I'd like to come back to Des and Guy, who did not put public safety as their top priority, taking 80, over 80% of the general fund. So, Des?
Yes, so, you know, I can't in good faith say it's my top priority and say I support something if I don't have a way to support it. So that is why economic development is my top priority, because without the funds, you can't do anything, as you've heard from, from every single council member here. We do support the people that support us, and our fire and our police officers need everything that they can from us. But if we don't have a way to fund that, by looking at current legislation, by seeing what grants are out there, by creating revenue within our own city, we can't actually support them. So my top, my top priority is economic development in order to support those budgets, because as we grow, we're going to need more officers. So we can't decrease what they have coming in, so we need to increase what we have in our general reserve.
Thank you. Guy?
So first, I'd like to say that our Clovis PD and Clovis Fire do a fantastic job, but it is not my top priority. It's definitely within the top five. My top priority is addressing the disparity between South Clovis and North Clovis. For those of you who live here, you know, you understand that there's a divide, and I want to address that divide. I think we need to invest in our public transit. You can't get anywhere in Clovis through the bus system, and if you don't have a car, you can't get anywhere at all. Affordable housing is definitely on that list. I live in a poorer neighborhood, so this, this is the sort of concerns that my neighbors and the people I grew up with are dealing with on a day-to-day basis.
Time. Thank you. Guillermo?
All right. My last question. What is the role of the city council, and what do you bring to the council that makes you the most qualified to lead?
And this question is directed to Diane.
So the main purpose of the city council, as I said earlier, the top priority is always going to be public safety. If our neighborhoods, houses, schools, and businesses aren't safe, I say the rest of it really doesn't start to matter as much. And so making sure that that is the top priority and those departments are fully funded is number one. But of course, there's other city services that we deliver as well, and in Clovis, we have a very high level of service that we deserve and expect to be maintained, and so that is part of it as well. But number one, I see it as the representative. I would be someone who is representing your voice, whether it's to issues coming from the county, the state, or anywhere else, and to make sure that what is in the best interest of Clovis as a whole community is what we are putting forward as what we need to see happening. When county resolutions or state mandates or federal mandates are coming in, we need someone who's going to stand up and speak out about what is best for Clovis and be willing to fight for that local control to make those decisions here.
Thank you, Diane. Joe?
Sure. We got to attend a candidate's forum with all the department heads. It was supposed to be an hour, it ended up being like two hours long. But at the opening, the city manager, he hit the nail on the head. What he said was the role of the council as he sees it, and I agree, is that it's to be the board of directors for the department heads. And one of the things that I really believe, having worked in city government for the last two years, is that you have to be humble and listen to the department heads because they are the experts, and you make the decision on the motions that they bring forward. I've written staff reports, I made presentations to council in this role, and a lot of times, some of the questions I get are about what I've written. And I think you have to be humble, represent your citizens, and then also be a firm voice, have competence, show some discernment in making those judgments, and represent the people who put you there in the first place.
Time. Thank you. Joshua?
Yeah, I believe the role of the council is to make sure that the city of Clovis serves the people of Clovis. And if that means our city staff, our city council, our leadership, everybody needs to show up each and every day with making sure that every single person in Clovis is their priority. And I truly mean that, all of Clovis. One of the things I love about the city of Clovis and our, in our form of government with council members is that we represent not one district, but we represent all of Clovis. And so just because I live in one neighborhood doesn't mean I should forget that. I should be able to have a, be able to pick up the phone or go drive to a coffee shop in any part of town or, or drive, or walk into a business and have a relationship with people throughout all of Clovis. So I believe part of our number-one responsibility is to be available, to have connection and relationship with as many people throughout the community from all sectors, from all facets, and make sure that the city of Clovis is working for each and every person throughout our city.
Thank you. Des?
Clovis first, Clovis always. The role of the council is to stand up and protect, advocate, and support every single community member in the city of Clovis, whether that's a business owner, whether that's someone that's homeless here at the time. We are the collective voice to advocate for our community. I am blessed through my profession to be able to be in Sacramento with every government organization acronym that you can think of, so I can be able to hear what our county supervisors are hearing, what our assembly members are hearing, what our senators are hearing, and bring that back just through my day-to-day job. So I believe that sets me apart from the other candidates, because I can share that information without having to play the game of telephone to get down through. I think we have some phenomenal leaders in our county, and they have done a great job at advocating for us. But as a council, we need to advocate for ourselves, and as a council member, I will advocate for every single community member in Clovis.
Thank you. Guy?
I believe the role of the council is to serve all of our citizenry. Like I said in my opening statement, I want to bring some perspective to the council. I'm not a business owner. I've never served public office. And I think that a Clovis way of life should be a Clovis way of life for everyone here. And I don't think that that's currently being met. So I want to stand up for those people who are getting left behind, those members of our community that are just forgotten about. And I think it's the council's job to address those concerns. We need to be looking out for all of our citizens, and I don't think the current city council is doing that. That's why I'm here.
Thank you. Drew?
The city council deals with the vision of the community in a long-term way through the general plan. When you see houses being built, that was planned five to 10 years ago. When you see tracts of land that are being bulldozed and prepared for houses, that decision was made probably 15 years ago. So these are the plans that we have to make in the long term. In the short term, we make immediate decisions on budget issues and other important things. I'm proud that I've been doing the job for five years. I was the mayor during the first year of COVID. We had people in the aftermath of COVID tell me other cities, we wish you had done what you did. We opened up our meetings, we supported our businesses, we refused to hound them, and we protected our Clovis, our seniors.
Time. Thank you, Drew. Kyle?
Yeah, I believe the job of city council is to be an advocate and representative for all members of Clovis. As mentioned before, we have a unique perspective as a city where we don't have a district. If you come in and you were able to talk with me, I represent the entire city. That is a unique difference that Clovis has, and I believe that's one of the things that's super important. Another aspect of it is having the long-term vision of what the Clovis is and what the Clovis way of life is through the general plan and the master plan, looking at that. As mentioned, it's a 10- to 15-year decisions we're making now. You know, the 168 was built, you know, that, that started, you know, in the late 70s, 80s. It took a long time to get that done, making sure that we are being progressive and proactive and looking to the future, as well as protecting the immediate needs such as public safety, is what city council's there for, and they're there to have the citizens come in and share what their concerns are, and for us then to advocate for that, whether it's at Sacramento or locally.
Thank you. Matt?
Well, the main thing is to serve the community, is to serve the people who live in the city of Clovis. That's the role of the city council, is to listen, is to communicate, is to hear what the people are saying. What are they telling us they want from the city of Clovis? You know, the guidance and direction is provided to city staff, that's the role of council, and to be creative. One of the things that I, you know, as a department head for the city of Clovis was, there is a lot of creative ideas that's come out of a city staff meeting. Every Monday, they sit in there and we talk about ideas, but they don't always make it to the city council. And that's one of the things that I want us to be able to do, is hear those creative ideas. What's best for Clovis? What are the, some of the projects that we can do that maybe we're not hearing about? And, you know, prior to becoming a candidate, one of the things I did was talk to all the city leaders and say, if I run for Clovis City Council, I want you to be creative. I want to hear your ideas. And I think that goes back to the citizens of Clovis as well. We want to hear your ideas, and our job.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, but thank you so much to all our candidates. We kept it on time. Thank you, Guillermo. And now we're going to provide all the candidates an opportunity to provide some closing statements, and we're going to start with Joe.
Sure. Yeah, we, we got in this late, in this race a bit late, but we're making, causing, having momentum. I believe that this is, is something that I've prepared my whole life to do. I was a graduate of the San Joaquin Political Academy in 2013. People asked me, said, are you going to run? And I said, no, I don't have anything that I'm real passionate about. But let me just tell you, over the last six years, I've seen a lot of divisiveness that happens at the national level creep down to the local level. And one of the things that really instilled my passion is to recognize that as a city council, politics are local, it's nonpartisan. I wouldn't have gotten, gotten involved in this race if it was partisan. And so really, the, the crux of my existence is I played a lot of team sports, and I think we're all on the same team, we all wear the same jersey, and we all want what's best for this city. And that's what I'm all about, and I hope I get your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe. Joshua?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody, especially all of you for coming here. You could have been anywhere else, but you chose to be here to listen to us, talk about all the things that we would do to solve Clovis, or, or, you know, to, to take care of everything for Clovis. But the reality is, it's all of us. It's not just us on stage here, but it's all of us working together. I'm a Unifier, I'm a bridge builder, I love working with people, people that disagree with me. There may be very few people out there that won't vote for me, I understand that. But even those that don't vote for me, trust me, if I do happen to get elected, I will represent you, I will hear you, and I will make sure that, that your voice is heard as well. I love this city, just as much as you do, I'm sure. And I just want to make sure that, you know, I use my passion, my abilities, my experience, all of that, to serve you and to serve all of Clovis, and I hope to earn your vote and have that opportunity to do so. But, so thank you very much for making time to hear us tonight, and I hope to meet you all very soon.
Thank you. Dez?
Yes, I echo the sentiments of thanks to everyone listening, everyone here. It really shows true effort and faith in your community. I think it shows a lot that there are 10 candidates. So, you know, either way, be proud that people are stepping up. I want to serve Clovis first and Clovis always. I don't want to go march my way up to the Capitol and move my way up the ranks there. I want to be here in this community so that my daughters can have somewhere to call home. I want to serve our community members. I want to be here, meet and interact with everybody. I want to be able to provide the opportunities where I live. So I believe that if you vote for me, I will be a sounding board. I come from here on a very small community, and I chose Clovis. I chose Clovis for a reason, because the city loves their people, and I just want to ensure that we love them back as a city, and that's what I would do as a council member, serve Clovis first, Clovis always, and make sure that that stays true and tried.
Thank you. Guy?
Thank you, guys, for being here, for letting you speak, for everybody on the internet and over the radio. Thank you. I'm proud to be a Clovissian. I know I keep talking down on some aspects of the city, but I think that Clovis can be great. And I want to see Clovis be a place where my kids can grow up, and their kids can grow up, and their kids' kids can grow up. I just want to have Clovis be a city that everybody can enjoy and can thrive in. And I don't want to sound like a parrot repeating myself over and over again, but I do think that we need to take care of some of our citizens, and I want to have that opportunity, and that's why I'm here. And thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you. Drew?
Thank you for coming tonight. I've been a public servant my entire adult life. I joined the Army at 18. After getting out of the Army, I began a civilian law enforcement career with federal, state, and seven cities in California, from the rank of police officer to police chief, to include five cities where I was the police chief. The best predictor of future performance is past performance. I've showed up, I've been dedicated to the city of Clovis for 30 years. I've served as the mayor during a very difficult time, and I wish to continue my service to the community, so I would appreciate your vote on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle?
Yes, I, I wanted to share and say thank you again for everybody here, for you guys putting on this event. It, it gives us a chance to actually share with you why we chose to run for Clovis City Council. What I think kind of sets me apart is the ability that, I'm a small business owner as well as a Realtor. I'm interacting with the people every day, why are they choosing to live in Clovis, why I choose to live in Clovis. So I understand that. I'm in all parts of the city, the northeast, to the southwest, northeast, I'm all over. I understand what we need. What we need is leadership and vision, and making sure that we have public safety, that we are protecting our school district, and that we are making sure that we have the ability to make local control and local decisions. I've also had the ability to be a general manager of a company that had over 200 employees, a million dollars a month in payroll, that had, went all the way from early March through Stockton. So the complexities of understanding how a budget works, how you can run a large organization is something that I have a lot of experience with, and I believe sets me apart. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Well, I just want to say I'm proud to have been a member of the city of Clovis since the age of five, off and on for the last, I don't want to say 50 years, but close to 50 years. And, you know, being part of that community is special, and I want to continue that special feeling. I want, you know, my kids had a great opportunity. They got to go to Clovis schools. We grew up in Clovis. I went to Clovis schools. My wife went to Clovis schools. And, you know, we want that for the future. We want what we had. We have, we've had great opportunities living in Clovis, and I want to help provide that same opportunity to others moving forward. Safe streets, a great public safety. You know, one of the things as a, as a police chief that I am so proud of is that, as a team, we were the safest city in the valley for six years while I was chief. And that's awesome, but that wasn't because of just me, that was because of the teamwork of the city of Clovis, whether it was through the police department working together, or the, you know, the city council members, or whomever it was, it was the teamwork that made us special. And I really want to continue that going forward, so.
Time. Thank you, Matt. Diane?
This is killing me.
We need to be honest and recognize that it's going to be increasingly difficult to maintain the Clovis way of life moving forward. Gavin Newsom has made it clear on a variety of issues that he wants to run Clovis. That's why it's more important than ever that we elect candidates who will fight for local control. And it isn't about partisanship, it's about having political courage. The fact that I have the support of every elected official who Clovis voters have picked to represent them at the county, state, and federal levels means I already established relationships that will give Clovis an amplified voice on issues that impact our community. Thank you again to our debate sponsors, my fellow candidates, and to all of you who are here in person or tuning in. I hope what you've heard from me tonight lets you know that I will be your voice defending the Clovis way of life. I hope to have earned your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all the candidates. Another round of applause to all our candidates. And thank you, the audience, both here, present, and on the radio and over the air, wherever means that you have connected, we thank you so much. Here at the Veterans Memorial District, we're proud to honor our veterans and their service. And one of the things we always share with folks when they say, thank you for your service to all our veterans, we say, make the sacrifice matter. And the way you make the sacrifice matter is protect that which our veterans fight for and defend, and you protect it by doing your part and being responsible, engaged citizens. This election, November 8th, we're going to have three seats in a council of five.